Do I hear a motion for approval?
Make a motion, we adopt the minutes of regular, uh, city council, August twenty twenty-three.
All in favor?
Second.
I'm sorry, second. Zach. All in favor? Saved by eye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? You had the, you got the second on that one, okay. Next financial statement, August twenty twenty-three, do I hear a motion for approval?
Make a motion to approve financial, August twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Did you call the roll, Barbara, please?
Jennifer Massey?
Yes.
Mark Higman?
Yes.
Zach Jeffrey?
Yes.
Zach Paul?
Yes.
Cal Mart?
Yes.
Zach Warren?
Yes.
Thank you. Now moving to general, we have resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero seven, millage rate. Dustin, would you give us the overview of that?
I'll read the title first, this will be resolution two thousand twenty-three oh seven, resolution levying a tax on real and personal property on residents of the city of Mayflower and accomplishing related purposes. It's not a new tax, every, of course, this is our personal property, it's the millage. Uh, Mayflower right now is at four, um, it has been for some time, uh, it can go up to five, most towns in Faulkner County are at four. Conversation with Barbara, we think only, only one community in the county is, is at five. But it is, that is, that is a, that's four dollars per, um, every thousand dollars of your property as it's assessed.
The last time it was increased is, uh, twenty, uh, two thousand?
Two thousand four.
Yeah, two thousand four was the last time it was increased, and we are currently at four point zero millage rate.
And the resolution as it's written, uh, calls for just to stay the same at, at four point oh unless you'll amend it.
Any discussion? We have to, we, we vote on this one time, according to Barbara, we vote on, the council votes on the millage rate one time a year, at this time.
In October, yeah, by, during or before or during October, this would be our time to do it.
Any, what's the other city that, that has a?
We, we think that Twin Groves on the north county has, has five. We think, we don't have the reason.
I can find it out, but they also have like zero retail tax. I make a motion to adopt a resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh seven.
Second.
So that's just to keep it the same?
Keep it at four.
It would be, remain at four point zero. We had a motion?
In a second.
In a second. Would you call the roll, please?
Jennifer Massey?
Yes.
Mark Higman?
Yes.
Zach Jeffrey?
Yes.
Zach Paul?
Yes.
Cal Mart?
Yes.
Zach Warren?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Under general, next item is resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero eight, police department vehicle. Taylor, would you give us an overview of that, please? Yeah. You can place it down the floor if you'd like. I don't know if that mic has been turned on.
Uh, we'll talk about it, sir. All right, uh, so this motion is for us to purchase a Dodge Durango to replace the Dodge Ram that's going to be going out quickly, uh, the Dodge Durango that we'd like to purchase right now, full and starred for, uh, it's already outfitted with a lot of lights, a lot of emergency equipment, uh, most of that equipment can stay, uh, some of the equipment has to be switched out, but we have a lot of that equipment already in storage, so we're gonna, uh, do our best to take whatever we have in storage and put in there after and go without having to spend any more money than we have to.
And this was basically, you're, you're trading one vehicle from the fire department, and then fire chief is going to explain the, the benefit in this. Do we need to vote on this, or should we hear both of them and then come back and, and then?
I, we should, we'll, we'll read the resolution and open it for discussion and vote.
Okay.
If it's approved, so.
One at a time?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's the resolution two thousand twenty-three dash oh eight, a resolution authorizing purchase of a two thousand twenty-one Dodge Durango from Mayflower Fire Department fleet.
And again, Taylor, explain the, the, the delta in terms of, we're not financing this vehicle.
Correct, all the money's gonna come out of the police vehicle fund, uh, right now there's currently a little over a hundred thousand dollars in the fund, uh, with the purchase of this vehicle for a thirty-one thousand five hundred. Uh, we would not be financing any payment if we didn't have any more payments, it would just be using the money that's in that account right now.
Taylor, it's my understanding some of that money came from an insurance proceeding, directorate, and some, we're not, gotcha. And you're saying the upholding cost will be limited on that vehicle?
Uh, it'll be very limited, uh, most if not all of the equipment we have. This one's a little different because it already have a lot of the, of the base equipment, definitely we need consoles and things like that, uh, so normally where we have to buy that stuff out around the party, uh, we would have to replace lights and stuff like that, which we already have, uh, my lard on.
Does, I know the, um, um, last Durango that you had, where the radio was mounted, uh, wasn't ideal, is, is this set up ideally, or is this set up the same way?
So every vehicle that, uh, we purchased since Chief Hunter took over, uh, we put the same console in them, uh, throughout the whole fleet, and it's the new updated console, everything's out there by the driver, uh, it's not like the computer stand in the old Durangos, like the one that was ready to mounted to the floor, had had bolts to the floor, all these are all self-contained, all the radios, everything's in the console, computer stands even in the console.
So we make a motion, uh, motion to pass?
Just motion and?
I'll make a motion to pass resolution, uh, can't speak, sorry to the wrong guy. Resolution, uh, twenty twenty-three dash zero eight.
I'll second. We can take a voice vote on this, can't we?
Yes.
Yes. Take a vote, a voice vote, all in favor, save by eye?
Aye.
All opposed, same? All right, thank you, Taylor. Now let's move to resolution twenty-three dash zero nine, the fire department vehicles. This is the other part, or the other half of this swap.
This would be resolution two thousand twenty-three dash oh nine, resolution authorizing purchase of a two thousand twenty Ford F-150 by the Mayflower Fire Department.
So we located a twenty twenty Ford F-150 at McFlory Volkswagen Plaza in La Corte. Uh, using the thirty-one five, that's the police department's antenna store, our Durango, we don't have to come out of pocket for just a little over five thousand dollars, uh, bucked it away, crystal bulk, it's bumping the budget, uh, allow us to purchase this truck, it's four hundred, uh, gonna help us walk it. It is a huge, it's got a thirty-seven thousand mile mark, we didn't see no need in purchasing something brand new, it's in great condition, no winter, everything checked out yet.
Does this one have a cover on the back?
No.
Of the bed?
No, we're looking at that, trying to find the best option.
So chief, what's, what's gonna be the purpose of this vehicle for you?
So it's gonna allow me to install more equipment, uh, currently, Durango, there's one's on space.
So is this gonna be like a chief's vehicle?
It'll, it'll take place in my Durango, uh, well, we have another set of certification equipment, want to mount in it as well, uh, gives us a little more storage, especially during a cold winter, uh, it also allow me to, oh, we won't really have a lake anymore, but, uh, grassy lake still flows, and we still get called in the river, so allow me just to hook up and go directly to the rest of it.
What, uh, what are your estimated up bidding cost on, on that vehicle?
I'd say nothing, and probably, I'm, I'm still using a lot, all of, most of the lights off that truck, uh, real minimal, uh, I don't expect a lot, we're on four R radios out of it, or iPad mounts out of it, uh, anything that we can take out of it or we use, uh, it'll cost, take a good shopping, uh, couple extra lights, 'cause this truck's a little bit bigger, we have to do, a little bit different than we need to park, but I wouldn't estimate very much, um, shopping and, uh, figuring out how we wanna do the rear, either cam or snow or anything, uh, be very language.
Without a puzzle, you're thinking, that money is, like, there is flexibility in your budget for that up bidding?
Yes, yes. Yeah, I, I've heard, I talked to Dale the other day, when we looked at the truck, was us using the thirty-one five from PD and only a little bit out of our budget, he said we were doing great, especially what we're doing, he said we're gonna offer, so, we're gonna attach a little bit, so.
Excuse me.
The total price was thirty-six thousand, not really what we did off.
And again, the delta will be paid out of the budget. No financing on this vehicle as well. And with this, we didn't mention this a moment ago with Taylor, um, once this is approved, then you would make this, start making the swap tomorrow, is that right?
I'll go, uh, pick up the truck in the morning, uh, we've already got a lot of time, so, work it out, if y'all approve it, I can go pick up the truck in the morning, uh, we've got a guy that's starting to, our up bidding, have been swapped, it'd be a lot easier, uh, that way it's started out, so, it'd probably take, it'd probably take us a couple weeks before the swap's completed, so.
And that's the same with you, Taylor? You've got the other vehicle that, I know you've got to take some of the things off of it, but you're going to go right out in and coordinate the?
It's all, everybody's coming off of my car, so, the only thing I'll have, the police department will have to do, is put their radio, their lights, their, uh, camera system, but have all those stuff put in there, talk to Chief Hunter, Chief Hunter has it all locked down, so, it should be apparently paying for the swap, should be just a couple weeks.
But again, this isn't going to create a problem with the police department being out of that?
No, sir, we won't be out of the vehicle in the time to take, to take all the gear out of it, as soon as they're done, uh, D upgrading, we'll, we'll start ours, but we won't be out of the vehicle until.
Okay.
I, I make a motion that we accept resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero nine.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Again, we'll take a voice, voice vote on the, this, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same? Thank you. Thanks, chief. Our next item under general disposal of the twenty twen-, uh, twenty-fourteen Charger on the police department. Taylor, would you give us an overview on that, please?
The twenty fourteen?
I'm sorry, the twenty fourteen.
The, the Charger's been in our spare fleet, uh, quite a while, uh, it has not been on the road, uh, simply, I'd say rough shape to be a tow vehicle, it's high mileage, uh, when we do have to have it on the road, we dump a lot of money into it, uh, so we, if we sell it, it'll be most likely through our, uh, government website, that we auction off things, uh, how we sold the last car, it worked out well, uh, it's all inclusive, they do all your paperwork and everything, uh, somebody bids on it, and we just kind of fix it up, uh, but it, I believe it would cost us more money to keep it, uh, than it would be selling, and, uh, we're welcome.
This is the vehicle, chief and I were talking about it the other day, looking at the expenses, we've already spent, um, well over two thousand, almost three thousand on that vehicle up to date, and now, I, I believe it was in the shop recently, and looking at another two thousand dollars, approximately two thousand dollars worth of repair work that the vehicle needs, and I'm?
That's just a spare car.
Yes.
Unfortunately, when a vehicle breaks down or something, they have to get it in a spare car, it has to be roadworthy.
That's right.
They have to put in a lot of the lot, so we have to have them over, at least.
Right. But the chief and I agreed that we would not spend any more money on this vehicle, try to go ahead and get rid of it, and then take that, uh, move it over to something else.
How many spare units do you have?
Just two. We have the, uh, fourteen Charger, uh, about eleven or, or eight over a hundred and five thousand miles on it.
You have another general mileage on this Durango?
Which Durango?
The, the twenty fourteen Durango that we're looking to sell.
The Charger?
No, your Durango.
I'm sorry, the Charger, I'm sorry, oh, the Charger, the, we're looking to sell, yes.
I believe it's at a hundred and twenty-five, hundred and twenty-six thousand miles. That's what we're selling.
Right, that's what I was asking, sorry.
What, what's the, what's the repair that, or need, what's the repairs that are needed on it?
Most of the repairs depend on the front end, uh, it's gonna take a little bit to get it roadworthy, and then something else works out, uh, wear and tear on a police vehicle is a lot higher than a regular vehicle, and, uh, and that's the front end of that, of course, is tore out, and, uh, everything's broken.
Is that a, is that like a police interceptor Charger, or is that like a civilian convert?
It was here when I got here, and I'm not a Charger.
I've got another question, is, and, I know the, the, the resolution at hand, I guess, would be to dispose of this one, but looking forward, and I know Chief Hunter's not here, I don't know if you have this information, without a strategic plan again, is, is there a plan to replace this vehicle with next year's budget, and move another one in your reserve, uh, and put a new vehicle in the fleet?
As, as we buy new vehicles, to put the vehicles that are being replaced into that swap, uh, so we wanna always have two reserve units available, and, uh, as we replace vehicles, move them over to that swap, so if they're higher mileage ones, uh, that would, would we keep the money on them.
Look, due to the number of accidents you guys have, I, I think it'd probably be wise to, obviously, we've talked about that, because we can't keep buying new ones and then buy other ones to put in reserve, and we gotta, if we're gonna have reserved vehicles, we're gonna have to take care of the ones we got, keep them between the lines, so.
And that's kinda where I'm aiming on this reserve vehicle today, I want you all getting, I want you to be able to protect our community, that you guys are doing a great job, I guess my concern is if we sell this vehicle for, I, I don't know the value of the vehicle, uh, I guess no one does, that's why it's going to government auction. Recoup some of that money from the vehicle in the auction to go towards a new vehicle potentially in next year's budget, but just looking dollars and cents wise, so it needs two thousand dollars worth of repairs, it's already had three thousand dollars worth of repairs, I understand the concept of the money pit, I also understand the concept of a vehicle market today, uh, we purchased two police vehicles last year that took months to get in, because just the ordering and the, the delivery of those vehicles was so far behind, and on top of that, if we're gonna spend forty, fifty thousand dollars on a new vehicle, which I understand will be new, I guess I'm questioning if, just for a backup vehicle, if we're not better off putting the extra two thousand dollars in and chasing it a little at a time, given the current vehicle situation, I, it's just a consideration I don't think to do.
So the vehicle that would get placed, so just scenario based, uh, say we do next year, put a new vehicle in the budget, it would be to replace, we have three, we have two vehicles right now on the road full time that are over a hundred and fifteen, a hundred and twenty thousand miles, uh, those vehicles will go down any day, and, and when they do, it's gonna be thousands of dollars to replace them, and then put them in a spare vehicle, uh, whenever, scenario based, say next year we do put in a budget for another vehicle, we would then replace our next oldest one, which would be one of our old explorers, then it would go in that, uh, part time once they're in the swap.
Sure, put the new thing on the road and figure it?
Right, and it's just?
The Mayflower, and, and?
Right, you know, and, uh, and it's terrible, I've had to ask this every time I come up here, you know, and, and I understand that, uh, we started when Chief Hunter got here with every vehicle we had, being a hundred thousand miles, and, and not roadworthy, and, uh, we just wanna keep you guys safe, and, and keep them in the, the best technology and, and vehicles that we can get them in, and, uh, and we're just having to piece by piece of vehicle by vehicle, uh, get out the ones that, that don't need to be on the road, uh, because it's proven time and time again with our, with our budget as far as maintenance goes, of how much we spend on high mileage vehicles, uh, we spend more on high mileage vehicles than we do paying for our new vehicles, uh, so we're, we're going to lose money on power mileage vehicles. Now what high mileage is, is a interpretation, you know, so a lot of departments go out at seventy-five thousand miles, a lot do eighty, some do a hundred, uh, and then you have some departments that are on a hundred and fifty thousand miles.
I would hope at some point in the future, hopefully in the near future, we reach a point where we have the option, and we'll have to decide what that mileage, that, that number is, that we should go ahead and trade that vehicle in to maximize our trade-in value to, on something else, we don't know what that number is now, 'cause we've never had that opportunity, we might be getting into that in the next year or so, uh.
And then we're really going to have a revolving, uh, roster of valuable vehicles, that way when we need a new vehicle, we're not saying, hey, let's sell this fifteen hundred dollar Charger, buy a fifty thousand dollar vehicle, it's?
Right.
But trade in this forty thousand dollar Durango on fifty thousand dollar again, and for this one.
And maybe of this, this line of questioning, I, I need to direct you, because obviously Chief Hunter would have the idea, obviously, as far as replacement, what the outlook is on that, we don't have that outlook, and if this vehicle's not in service, and, and we don't feel it's worthy of being in service, then obviously we need to dispose of it, I guess the conversation I was looking toward would be had when we talk about replacement, so, I'll, I'll table that.
And, and my concern is, 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 yeah, we gotta get rid of the vehicle, I have no issues with that. Mr. Mayor, I agree with you, we need to get our vehicles to where they get a certain percent of miles, you know, that we automatically trade them out, the only weak link to that is the number of accidents we're having over and over and over, and that is the weak link, that if we keep having those accidents, and we're being, and we're not tightening that up, then, then we can't afford to do that, but if we tighten up the accidents and we drive more carefully, and, you know, be more responsible, where we don't have to replace so many vehicles, then we can get to the point to where we have new vehicles with low mileage, with things we can be proud of, but that's kinda in the police department's court to what, to what we do, because we have bought a lot of police cars in the last few years, and I'm not talking about since you guys, or since you've been here, I'm talking about over the past, how many years since I've been here, I mean, it's, it's, it's been quite a few, I'd like to see us slow down on that so we could replace everything and get everything new, it's the same with thing with the fire department, you know, if we can take care of things and not have to keep?
Chasing the wheel?
Yeah, chasing our tail, then, then, then we'll get ahead, not fussing at you, just making it, letting you know where I stand on, on the deal, as far as, I, I desire you to have good equipment that's safe, and, but it takes both of us, as a whole, to make it happen, you, you follow me?
Yeah.
Okay.
Where, where are we at as far as mileage across the board on our vehicles?
There's a difference a lot, because we don't have any vehicles, we don't really have any usual minimum vehicles at all.
We don't. How many, how many miles you think you put on a year, on, on each vehicle?
Uh, I think on average, they put between thirty and forty, uh, thirty-five, I think was the average was, last year or something like that.
Per, per vehicle, or?
So you're talking about rotating them out about every three to four years, then?
Well, as far as number of vehicles, it's my understanding every officer has a take home vehicle, right? And then they, I know our, our, our forces go all over quite a bit, is that including part-time officers, or they have those two reserve vehicles, or their vehicles set aside for the part-time officers?
Part-time is their, they'll drive their personal vehicle here, and then get in and hold it up to you.
But not, but not one of the two that you're talking about that are in reserve, those are?
So the, the two that we have back here, if we have a part-time officer come in, that's what they would drive, is our spare vehicles, and, uh, whichever one, if it isn't being used, or whichever one they're gonna drive, that's the one that they would be affecting.
Dustin, we have a resolution to this, or we just have a motion?
It's a motion, because we don't have a named buyer or a price, so just, just a motion and second to, uh?
So make a motion that we put up the two thousand fourteen Charger, uh, government auction, I don't know what, uh, to start it up.
Second. We'll take a voice vote on that as well, all in favor, by eye?
Aye.
All opposed, same?
Didn't mean to grill you over selling a car, but?
I drove a lot of them.
I'll remember that, no, I'm just kidding.
I should also state that the reason why Chief Hunter's not here, he's in a, a, a police chief seminar, conference, in the, for the two or three days, so that's why he, in Hot Springs, why he couldn't be here tonight. Thank you, Taylor. All right. Old business. Do we have any old business? We move to reports, fire truck, Chief Tolliver.
I'll give you all a little rundown, just to get everybody caught up, so, so far this year, we're at eight hundred and eighty-five calls for service for twenty twenty-three, we did a hundred and one calls for service for the month of August, and we're at eighty one calls for service so far for September. Uh, to get us on to the new business, we have located a two thousand four E-one type boom bumper, it's got twenty-six thousand miles on it, uh, we're asking permission, for permission to go with an inspected truck in Connecticut, and if everything looks good, passing with inspection, we'd like to purchase it, uh, we would lease it, uh, or finance it, uh, the finance looks like it would be roughly five to seven years, uh, depending on how we wanna go with it, uh, it's a great truck, in great condition, we'd like permission to go inspect, and if permission looks good, purchase the vehicle.
So we gave permission for it already? We talked about?
We've talked about it, okay.
How does that permission move, Dustin? I mean, do we have a dollar amount that we can say, is that the way?
A hundred and fifty thousand is that.
That's the sale price.
And this would be replacing the nineteen ninety-seventh E-one looking at the fleet right now, a hundred and thirty-eight thousand miles, uh, that one would replace a ninety-six pumper, which would put that as our reserve, uh, out of station two, would take place and then put in, uh?
Yeah, like, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
The reason we want this truck, uh, like I've said before, uh, right now, uh, we're solely as volunteers back in, uh, but we want one truck that can do everything, uh, so our pumper is our primary apparatus, carrier armor, it's pretty equipment, air cavity, any fault it goes into, it adds everything we need on it.
Chief, also explain how much gear that we will be, uh, obtaining, that the fire station or that fire department that's selling the truck is going to provide us.
So they're also going to throw in fifteen, twenty thousand dollar portable equipment, hose, uh, couple, the complete set of rescue tools, cutter spreader, ground rescue trucks, gasoline portable lots, and other miscellaneous full equipment that they're also going to throw in, uh, he said, when we get the truck, he said I'll be surprised, 'cause it's gonna be full of stuff in every department, uh, we did get a quote on shipping it from here, from Connecticut here, deliver it to the fire station, it was thirty-eight thousand, or thirty-eight hundred dollars, it's over thirty-nine hundred dollars to get it from Connecticut to here, that would save us, us driving it, and fuel costs, and if anything happens, we blow a tire, anything with that, it would save us putting a year's worth of mileage on that truck.
So? I get, it's, it's awkward, because we don't have, uh, this is all speculative, after they go see it, so, so I think you, what you could do here is, you sort of get a head nod vote, you could take a voice vote that, yes, you're okay with the exploratory trip, and then once we come back, then you could, in theory, you could go ahead and start the process, we could do the resolution even after the fact.
Well, the agreement? The agreement that the chief has had in order to hold this vehicle, uh, vehicle, um, go into detail in terms of how many of you have looked at this by video, explain the, the problems that we've had in the? Uh, explain the, the problems that we've had in the past with buying a vehicle from Connecticut or one of the, the northern states is that it's basically been rusted out because of the salt. Explain the situation and that how...
Dustin, I've invested in over six-thousand-dollar pressure line. I go under the truck, under the carriage. Uh, myself, Zach Ward, Chris Matthews, we've all looked. Uh, it's spot on, so there's definitely no rust under there. These guys take good care, they invest in time in it. Uh, it's a great truck, it's right there across, and it will be a very asset for many, many years to come.
And I know, and I know we were talking about all the details of that through the workshops and all that.
Right.
I guess my question, what Dustin was trying to answer is how do we go forward with this without a purchase agreement? Do we, do we authorize the financing? Do we, does the shipment go into financing? Again, it's, those are my questions or procedural questions about this transaction.
What we were hoping for, Dustin, is that, uh, three of us are going to go inspect it. Uh, chief, myself and Zach.
Chris, go ahead.
I'm sorry?
Chris Matthews.
Okay.
Just so we go back and forth.
Okay, okay. So the three of us, uh, and what we've told the, it's my understanding what you've talked to the fire chief there, uh, they have taken it off the market because we, we've told them that we want it. Is that correct?
We've told them we're highly interested in it and wanna come inspect it.
This is the best one that we have found so far.
But I, I think the question is...
How do we go forward?
How do we go forward? Wait, you, you sold us on it. We're sold. We just need to know how to go forward.
What we would like to do is to have authorization, uh, that when we're, we go look at it and the three of us agree, this is, this is a good deal and we want to buy it, that I can take a check with us, that I can sign it there for that amount of a hundred-and-fifty.
I make a motion that we authorize the four of you guys to go to wherever to look at this vehicle and if you need it, get it. If it's... I would encourage you to thoroughly, thoroughly, thoroughly examine.
Yes, sir.
What's the outside limit on that, that they're authorized to spend up to?
A hundred-and-fifty-four thousand? Does that cover a share on the end of the truck? Are you gonna try to negotiate, Rox?
Well, I was, uh, I was told that, uh, that was my intent. That was my intent. And then we found out that, uh, they were gonna give us roughly fifteen to twenty thousand dollars. Chief said, please don't try to negotiate. Don't, don't, don't let this deal pass through. So based on everything that we've seen, we're, we're getting a good deal with the truck and we feel like with the added, uh, equipment, we're definitely...
Mm-hmm. Then that will meet everything you need? It gives us up the codes and standards?
No.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna be set as far as equipment goes.
Oh, trucks they will be. We got a long way to go as far as getting up to day on standards and everything.
Right.
We'll get there.
So I think for tonight, just the voice motion, we still would need a second on that, but that, that, that would be enough transparency among you all and, and putting that in the, in the minutes. And then if the purchase is successful, I will shore all this up with a written resolution for the next time, if and when that happens.
Yeah, I'll tell the reason.
Okay.
So you made a resolution? I'll, I'll second the resolution, or the, the motion.
Do we need a roll vote on this or a voice vote?
Either one, spark, voice vote.
All right, let's have a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Indicate by aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? About same? Thank you. Did you get what you needed?
I did, except there were two, three people going?
Four.
Four people.
Yes, sir. Uh, while I'm up here, Dustin, can I go over what we talked about in our email last night?
Yes, I think so, yes. Oh, yes, yeah, to undo that.
Uh, we have some miscellaneous turnouts on it. Our, our date, they're over ten years old, they're out of maintenance there. Uh, also some helmets. We'd like permission to donate those to department in need. Before we post them, we want to leave permission, talk to Dustin. He said it would take, y'all proving us to list these, they're backed up, there's a bunch of different sets. Some are small, rural departments could probably use that equipment, uh, that we don't wanna have anymore.
Are we trying to sell that?
No.
This is to give?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion.
So I, I got a question real quick about that. So if, if they're out of date...
They have a ten-year shelf life.
So could another department use them then?
Yes, sir.
So why can't we use them?
We're not gonna get somebody hurt and then get sued because, and they have a two-day warranty.
Okay. So we're gonna give it to somebody else?
That's why I'm gonna...
Somebody else is willing to cut that, but it's not a problem.
Okay.
It's been done before.
Something's better than nothing.
Well, I mean, yeah, I guess, I guess so.
We want to put something.
Good question.
But Dustin would think he would do a waiver of...
Yeah.
Okay.
It is, it's, it's, it's common. Unfortunately, that's common. I mean, it's, it's usable equipment, it's not, it's...
I guess my point is we're not using it, someone else can use it with it. I'm not gonna allow the donation of the equipment to another department.
Good, thank you.
I'll second that.
We, we did it a fine, last department, the department from East Arkansas, come pick up five, six bags.
Happy to do it.
And they were happy to do it. They loaded the four truck up and drove back kind of those out of Illinois, so, but department needed it, so.
And we're released of liability.
Yes, sir. Little waiver.
Right. Now, do we need a, a voice vote on this, Dustin?
Just aye, aye's amazing.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? About same? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief. Next on the list, update on resurfacing Main Street. Jimmy, can you give us a rundown on that, please, sir?
Yes, sir, I still have...
Come up here.
What are you doing, Jimmy, Joe? I still...
Hold on, hold on.
I still...
Now...
Yes, the, uh, project manager, that's who I'm waiting on. Mike, the guy I've been dealing with, they're gonna send him off up in Missouri, owning another job. So now I'm just waiting on the project manager. He's on vacation. He's back.
Now, this is the project manager from ESS?
Yes.
Okay. I talked to R.D.O.T. regarding the, the Main Street situation, and, um, they have no documentation whatsoever that that was part of the project, uh, to resurface part or all of Main Street, that that was strictly, um, failback on the contractor. Jimmy, we'll have to explain when that meeting took place, that there was no...
We had a meeting right before this project started.
That was what, two and a half years ago?
Yes. And it was like me and Randy, the other major, police chief, fire chief, I think Josh and...
Now, that was not the current police chief or the current fire chief, right?
No.
Right.
And so basically, I'm down in one, dealing with, how was that?
Right, but there was no written documentation?
I figured they would be, but apparently they wasn't because nobody could come up with it. Can you fake the work at all? I was just, you know, I asked them if they was gonna put a temporary cross down here where they was working. They said, no, we're gonna use the existing streets. And I said, well, what we gonna do? When y'all get through, if they carry them up? Well, we'll put them back like they was when we started. You know, they, they didn't say nothing about overlaying buildings or anything. So the other day I talked to Mike, which is the guy I've been dealing with, and he told me that, uh, he was pretty sure they would patch four places on North Main.
Quarter mile stretch it?
Huh?
Four quarter mile stretch it?
Yeah, right, yeah. Now, just to spot today, it's showing a lot of work. That's under the old rail. It's just, down where they bringing all the shale out.
That's where they put the steel plates?
The plates, yes.
Yes.
They're supposed to do that. And then the entrance, you know, but it's pretty bad shape.
Entrance into what?
The entrance off of eighty-nine North or Miller Street. It's on the other side of the tree.
Oh, okay, south entrance.
Yeah.
Okay.
Jim, Joe, you know as well as I do, that traveling Main Street every day, that there's some wallered out spots with lights that are...
It's not the whole street?
It's one, it's probably not gonna last through a, through a hard rainstorm cycle, I wouldn't guess.
It's gonna be bad at heart if we get a bad one, yeah. I don't know, there's marked the bad spot and it was just cracked up and the whole road.
That was true. Yeah.
Well, here's what we're facing. Um, we don't have any legal recourse against that because we have no, they didn't document anything about, the people that were in the, the meeting did not document anything in writing. This was all verbal, based on what Jimmy knows now, uh, in terms of...
It didn't pop first round, it's on this law. I mean, I didn't have any idea.
Well, what I talked to R.D.O.T. about is that, uh, if they would help us with that. And they told me that our best outcome would be to apply for a grant, and they would, they would provide us with documentation that this was a project and so on and so forth, and that it was damaged during this project. And they felt maybe that, that would help us in getting grant to replace the whole street.
So for now, we're just looking to get what we can get from ESS?
Just like it's not, I mean, it's basically, it didn't get as hard hit as North Main, but it got to you.
But then we'll just have to look at in the next year's budget or whatever, looking at receiving grant funding or outside funding, or even, I guess, using some of our own one percent funds to possibly have to resurface that road because it is terrible.
We're, we're, we're going to, to aggressively go after a, a grant. Uh, in addition to that, uh, when I met with them about, we have no lighting, uh, you know, on any of the, um, from the bridge, nothing on top of the bridge or the overpass, and then the on-ramps and off-ramps, we have no lighting whatsoever. I asked them about, uh, where's the lighting? And they were to, explaining to me that they don't put lighting in projects anymore because in the past, uh, they did have lighting, they would put up, uh, what they called a standard, uh, type of, of lighting, uh, poles and type of lights. And there were so many complaints with various cities where they were building these overpasses or bridges, um, that the, R.D.O.T. at top, the top level decided, okay, we're getting so much flack on this, we're just gonna stop and allow the, uh, stop funding for the lighting, and then we will allow each city on their own to apply for a grant to put in the lighting.
And I think that would be part of that process as well.
And we would go...
That off-ramp, that's two more lanes?
Exactly.
It's there every day and, and making that right-hand turn to turn south on North Main, I find myself across that line just about every time I turn. And it's, it's dark and your headlights are shining on the railroad tracks.
It's, it's really dangerous.
It is.
And that's why we're going to go after a grant for the lighting and the replacement of, of Main Street.
Thank you, Jimmy. Go get them, Jimmy.
Thank you. Thank you, Jimmy. We'll keep you updated on that. Um, okay, the next is renaming Old Highway eighty-nine North section. Received a, excuse me, I received a telephone call from one of the head guys with R.D.O.T. a week and a half ago, and they sent me a letter, uh, basically telling me that, um, the portion of Highway eighty-nine, section five, has been officially removed from the state highway system. Uh, they're sending me the information that says that, uh, it is now turned, that's, section is turned back over to the city of Mayflower. And when I asked, okay, it's, it, what is going to be the name, that they're going to name that portion, he explained to me that that is left up to us, the city, to either rename it or name whatever we would like to. Uh, we, so at our workshop, we discussed what we were going to do, leave it, um, as the, the original name, uh, was Miller Street, and then it came, uh, somehow turned over to Highway eighty-nine North. Um, so in trying to gather up as many, uh, comments and suggestions as we could, uh, the, the, the majority came back and the people of the city said they would like for the name to remain Miller Street. So with that, I'm bringing to the council, uh, for a vote, that we would just leave it, let it revert back to the old name of Miller Street. How does, how does everyone feel about that?
Yep.
One of the reasons why is that that has already been established through GPS. Can you...
Who fills up on my GPS?
Yes, it, it's, it's both. So if we were to change that, we, we would have a nightmare in terms of deliveries and this type of thing. And again, that was, I'm not familiar with the history of the Millers, but as I understand it, there was, um, it, it was named after a family that was really, did a lot for Mayflower. So, um, that's, my recommendation is to the council, you have to vote on it, but my recommendation is that we go back, let it revert back to Miller Street, and we move forward. Uh, I'll get with the highway department, R.D.O.T. to finalize that name. I have to fill out a form for them so that they can go and finalize that officially plus get it into GPS, or, or officially now into GPS.
Are you just needing a motion?
I need a, a motion and a vote on that.
I'll make a motion to, to make the name for the street to revert back to Miller Street.
I'll make a second.
We'll have a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Same? All right. Now we move into something that, uh, this is the fun part. If you look at the agenda, um, we are now going to give recognition to our students from Mayflower, our Mayflower schools, um, the FFA County Fair winners. I don't, I'll be honest with you, I don't know a lot of history about FFA, but what I've learned in this past week, we have a lot to be proud of, uh, in Mayflower. And that's why we wanted to come together tonight. I had the privilege of going and seeing Tori Barpsdale, um, perform this weekend, and it, it was quite amazing, okay? Not only for her, but these other people, uh, students too, that has won awards. And so I, when I was there, um, the first thing I thought about, how proud I was, that this is from Mayflower. We're, we're not talking about, you know, uh, some, our, our schools that, that we've got some drug problems, that we've had an attack, that we've had, um, problem students and this type of thing. We're talking about our future leaders. And so the, when I came back, uh, I talked to Barbara on Monday, I said, we've got to come in and try to, to get everybody together, get all the information, and we want to take this time to recognize these students. So we were able to pull together, and we've got some certificates that we would like to, I would like to read each student and their accomplishment. And what I'd like to do is, we'll, we'll take picture of me presenting that student, but please don't leave. That, when we get finished with this, we'll conclude the meeting. But we want to have a group photograph of, of everybody and their accomplishments so that we can get this publicized and, uh, so that we can, we can, we can celebrate your, the, the good deeds that you guys... good deeds that you guys have, have fulfilled and accomplished. With that, Barbara, did we have the certificates?
They're down there.
All right.
What I'm going to do, why don't you, our name, we can take our order.
No, sure, they're not.
Lauren Coe. I'd like to read this certificate of achievement, congratulations for winning fifth place in voted for classics and awarded the cabinet table of four awards at the twenty-twenty-three Walker County Fair. Next, congratulations? Oh, she's not? Okay, I'm going to go in and read for her, congratulations, Kayla, for winning second place award with her mini lot, as a twenty-twenty-three Walker County Fair. I'm sorry, what is it? It is right, Barbara, we will lie. But we thought that was, but again, well, sure, so congratulations, Kayla, and we'll get this to her. Next, London Webb. Okay, all right. Congratulations to London for winning first place in best of three and her mini lot at the twenty-twenty-three Walker County Fair. Congratulations to London. What about the same thing? This is certificate of achievement, congratulations to Kayla, many of, for winning reserve three champion purebred breeding guilt at the twenty-twenty-three Walker County Fair. Next, Amy Richardson? This is congratulations to Amy for winning reserve cylinder showman, reserve grand champion purebred breeding guilt, breeding champion purebred breeding guilt, overall market, market cod at the twenty-twenty-three Walker County Fair. Next, Alvin Porter?
She's not there, she's actually at the district fair today.
Oh, okay, is there a competing also? Okay. We, we wished them all the best. I'm going to go ahead and read this also, congratulations to Alvin for winning fourth class, second class six and fifth in class nine with her lamp, first in vote for Peter, Peter steer and hemper class and fifth place in Walker County red hem, hemper at the twenty-twenty-three Walker County Fair. So congratulations to her. Now, we're, we're, I need to do also a competing...
So now, I just, for the district fair, I'm up. And today, she actually won reserve grand champion prospect steer and her two lambs got second and fourth place in her class, so.
So we'll have to update this. And with the others as well, hopefully they'll, they'll do well as well. Okay, and then last, Tori Barcdale. Give me a second, I'll let me read all of it. Okay. This is presented to Tori Barcdale on winning grand champion breed dog, grand champion weather dam, grand champion market goat, reserve champion market goat, grand champion cylinder goat showman, grand champion, uh, you, no, you're right, you, uh, reserve champion market lamb, grand champion cylinder lamb showman. You gotta take a coffee break. At the twenty-twenty-three Walker County Fair, awards of this magnitude are not achieved by an individual since twenty-fourteen. Congratulations.
I have one bit of information I thought, this is for the, oh, this is it, yes. I, and going through not only our people, but also people, other than young people from other schools, it, it was really exciting to see that. And then I ran across something that was printed on Facebook that I thought basically told the story of a lot of people. But this is directed and was written about Tori from Vermont and I'd like to read this. For late nights, blood, sweat and tears pay off this past week. The night Vermont woke up to the bar lights at two AM got her to here. The morning she could have stayed in bed, but she got up, the big knee got her here. Having a great support team that believed in her got her here. This past week, Tori playing, and I'm not gonna read all of this. All of those things that I ordered it. This new high accomplishments has not been achieved since twenty-fourteen. In addition to those accomplishments, these, she also had won several awards in photography and crafts. Tori spends an average of four hours per day in the lawn during show season. She has a four point O, grade one average and is a member of the National Honor Society, student council, basketball, she plays basketball and softball. Additionally, she is a junior volunteer firefighter for Mayflower. Tori, keep working hard, stay kind and humble. We wish you luck over the next few weeks as you continue to compete and represent Mayflower. I thought that was really over the top. Participating. You are the person that we need to support and we really appreciate this. Again, I, I will go in and say, I admire not celebrating these kinds of accomplishments. Seems like all we hear on the news is something bad. And when I, when experiences left this past week, I said, we have to do this. So thank you all for participating and coming here. And I know the parents and friends, you know, they're right there with all of these students, but thank you, you did, you did very well and you will be successful, you're already successful. And if there's any way that we can help towards the city with you, let us know. Now, sir, you, you might have your hand up?
Yes, sir, these kids are going to Fayetteville on Sunday for the Arkansas Youth Expo and then October fourteenth, they'll be going to the state fair.
Really? Now, is that to compete in what you just completed?
Yes, sir, the exact thing that they just did, they're gonna do with those two, okay.
Okay, and with that, now what happens when I was there and I saw your sale, what, it made the, made the face, what you sold?
You have the money and him.
Really, so you did, did, you keep the money, but you also get yourself an animal?
Some of them will sell their animal after the Arkansas State Fair. Am I not gonna go back to Texas?
It's more of a donation for our hardware.
Okay, well, that's what I was saying.
That pays for, a lot of it pays for next year's animals, like the money's where it raises at Walker County Fair will go outside with the animals and then she'll pay that money, purchase her next year's animals, her faith bills, her shows, her...
Okay, so, so basically this is the one year of camp, that you buy an animal sometime in the early market year and then at some point, everything that you judge, is that mine, buy that money? People, people are saving it for... Really, for, for this next year?
No, we're, we're, we're over still right now. We got thirty pounds and out there pushing three hundred.
Wow. Like I said, I, I...
It's a lot of work and...
Yeah, I can tell that. I, I was watching Tori's, as she was making, but then there was other students, you know, in between and, and there was, you can tell there was an awful lot of work that she put into, awful lot of work. Congratulations to you. You should be, you should feel good about your accomplishment. Anyone else?
I wanna say thank you for having me do this, this is the first time I've been invited to do this here, like this, and it means a lot to those parents and the whole group.
Well, like I said, when I, I was at this function, the first thing I thought about, why, 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 where are the, the news people? Where are the cameras? You know, if there was something bad going on and, you know, I'm trying to put them down, but you understand what I'm saying? We need to celebrate, you know, encourage our youth to do things like this. I guarantee there's none of these individuals, all of y'all are successful. I, I know you're not getting the teachers' problems, you know, you're, you are the model that, the role models that, that others should be following. So thank y'all for doing this and thank you, parents. I know you have to, you have to do a lot of sacrificing and, and be the cheerleaders there, you know? And that's good, that's good. So again, we're, we're proud to be, but this is just the start. And, and he must, he must, uh, surprise us as to what, what happens. I know y'all are successful, but this sale about selling your animal, keeping, keeping the money and then go sell it again. I don't know if that's legal or not. But no, thank you and I, I hope you, I hope you make a lot of money off of it, you deserve it. Who, you okay? Yeah. Watch that step there.
All right.
Okay, moving on, are there any announcements? I'm sorry, any comments? Then the announcements are, are... I'm sorry? Oh. Yes, short comment, commentary.
I promise I won't talk as long as... First off, I wanna say thank you so much to the police department for what they've done recently, stopping the gentleman that was wrecking his vehicle in Vineyard in Northern, and also the number of drug busts that they've made recently this year. Very, very grateful, police department. What I've got here, I've got a couple of questions and having said on that board, I was not always aware of what codes were in place. I know that we're getting ready to have a lot of buildings done in Mayflower and that could be a good thing. But the question is, what codes are in place? State tax, city tax, federal tax, what are, are they up to date? So there's gonna be plumbing, there's gonna be electrical, there's gonna be roads built over there, the hay field, and there are considerations that have to be made and somebody has to be on top of that. We're talking about Main Street falling apart. If you, if you don't build the streets properly in this next development, they're gonna fall apart and the city's under responsibility or repair.
We have, let me just, let me just interrupt you just for a second. We, this is going to be best addressed at our workshop where we can go into all kinds of detail, but let me, what you're referring to with phase two of Vineyard, we have our city engineering firm that is, has looked at that and is making sure that it is built, being built with all the specifications that's going to be in place when they get finished. So we have an engineering firm that's already looked at their plans and approved them and will be inspecting as that development goes forward.
Do we have a code inspector that's gonna be responsible for doing that?
There will be others that will be looking at that.
Do we have a code inspector of the city that will have the authority to go in and write citations, issue stop work order?
We are in the process of hiring one next week. We've already got, made an offer, he's accepted, he will start next week.
Okay. Now, would that person, living in the city attorney can answer this, but would that person have the authority to write citation and issue stop work order?
Yes. Yes.
Because in, in past past, the code inspector was not able to do that.
I said yes.
Now, right now, work is done to develop home sites over there on Long and Muscat. As of twelve forty-five this morning, no building permit had been issued for that. So what should the city do about that?
It's my understanding that they went in and moved the top soil. No building has began.
They've drawn in soil? So they're preparing, they're preparing the site?
That's right. And they, I was told that they would be in either tomorrow or Thursday and to get the permits for that. So yes, there will be permits and it will be followed.
So... Firstly, on Conqueror, there are three aisles up there that have been in the process of building for two, two and a half years. During that time, weeds have grown exceptionally high, trash has been out there, there's a porta potty on the street and I'm sure that none of you want a porta potty looking at you and your house. Stuff like that should not be allowed to go on in our city. I have invited some of you to drive to the venue, to go up on Conqueror. I'm sorry, I haven't seen you, but you have them here. But nothing's been done about that trash site.
Yes, there, there has been things twice. I've already met with them several times in the past month and I know that they have cleaned part of it up, they haven't cleaned all of it up, but you're right. As I said, we're hiring a, we got the commitment yesterday, the guy will be starting next week and with a full-time code enforcement agent. So yes, we will, we were going to start. We have not done a good job. I just took office in January, I've hired, tried to hire six people for code enforcement and we haven't been successful. This person, we're going to be successful and we are going to have to come in and start looking at our codes and we will be enforcing those. We, we're, it's a slow process, but yes, there has been a lot of communications with this builder and going forward, there was going to be more and it's going to be more stringent.
It's gonna happen.
Yes.
Run off, I'm looking at the flat that's up there right now, there is no provision for water retention.
No, that's not incorrect. All of that has worked out, there's gonna be two retention ponds.
It's not on the side, it's on the...
Uh, but it has, it, the engineering drawings are there. I'm gonna have to cut this off. We will have full discussion at our city council workshop. What is the date of our next one, Barbara? Yes.
It'll be the twelfth.
The twelfth, so if you, yes, if you will, if you will get on the agenda for our workshop, we will go into all the detail of this and we'll show you the engineering drawings. Yes, what you're speaking of, okay, thank you. All right, moving on, then you've got the next city council meeting Tuesday, October the twenty-fourth. The next planning commission is scheduled for Tuesday, October the twelfth and the next workshops, council workshop meeting is Thursday, October the fourteenth. Okay.
Yeah, the...
It's the, the planning commission, the October tenth on the Tuesday and the twelfth is the Thursday for the workshop. The twelfth is correct on the Tuesday for the next council meeting.
Okay.
Okay, so...
I'll get those corrected.
So the planning commission meeting is the tenth, did you say? And then the council workshop meeting is the what?
Twelve, well, okay.
Twelve, okay. Yes, we definitely want to get those correct. All right.
All right.
I'll get that corrected soon, something.
Yes, and then the last one, Barbara, do you want to talk about, um, Tom Maiden, uh, reception on October the sixteenth?
Yes, and I know this is a, a public meeting, and you can, you can view it, but. Inception for Tom, thinking that he is going to be recognized for his twenty-six years in business, but hopefully, there'll be a lot of people that will come and join in and thank him for being in business here for all these years, so we want Tom to come, but we're hoping to not let Tom think it's going to be such a big celebration.
But also, we will have refreshments?
Yes, there will be refreshments for it.
And we will have that at the, uh, Mayflower Community and Senior Center.
Yes.
Next door. That will be on October the sixteenth.
And I, I picked that date because that is also the date that the Chamber of Commerce meets, and I thought since some of our council members are on that, on that board, that that would just be a good time to recognize a businessman that's been here for all these years.
Tom is a good guy, if you, and I know of, uh, he is, he has been there to sell all kinds of things, so we definitely want to recognize him.
We want to get the word out to anybody that would be interested in coming by and just saying thank you to Tom, but we don't want him to feel overwhelmed.
Yes. All right. Uh, do I have a motion to conclude our meeting?
Motion, adjourned.
Second.